We got it, Dan.
The next group of waivers requested waivers five through nine are included in our application out of an abundance of caution to ensure that the planning board recognizes that we have read the bylaws carefully and we've noted every piece of zoning bylaws that might be necessary. However, the these next few that I'm going to discuss are either not applicable or they're premature because we haven't gotten to the stage where we can fulfill them yet. So I'll go through them a little bit more quickly if possible. But the fifth waiver requested is for section 2143 requiring a copy of its provisional certificate of registration from the Department of Public Health. If applicable, it says. That is not applicable here. The sixth waiver requested comes from zoning bylaw section 2144. A copy of its registration as an RMD from the Massachusetts Department of Public Health. This is not applicable either because our applicant is not seeking an RMD. To be clear, a registered marijuana dispensary is pertaining to the medical industry and not the recreational industry. And so my client's seeking a recreational license from the Cannabis Control Commission and is not seeking to establish both a marijuana establishment in conjunction with an approved RMD. Section the seventh waiver requested comes from zoning by law section 2145 and that's proof of liability insurance coverage or maintenance of escrow. And this waiver is requested because this requirement is premature. We do not, we are unable to get a liability insurance coverage or maintenance of escrow because we were at the stage we're at with the application process with the Cannabis Control Commission, it would, it would not make sense to get such insurance coverage because they're time sensitive and they're, they pertain to a time period and by the, and if we were to get one now, by the time the Cannabis Control Commission is reviewing it, it would have expired or we would need to get a new one. Nevertheless, we will 100% have liability insurance coverage by the time the doors are open as that is a requirement from the Cannabis Control Commission as well. And it's just general good sense. The eighth waiver requested is for zoning by law section 21413A, marketing and advertising. This, our applicant here requests a waiver for this requirement because it seeks a written plan for the marijuana establishment's marketing and advertising plans. A marijuana establishment does not need to submit a marketing and advertising plans with its Cannabis Control Commission as part of its application, but must only obtain approval for labeling and packaging of certain items, which it would be premature to consider at this stage of the application process. But to the extent that the planning board wishes to weigh in on the packaging requirements for items such as pre-rolls, we are certainly happy to supplement at the appropriate time that that is necessary. The final waiver requested is for zoning by law section 4D landscaping. And the applicant respectfully requests a waiver for this requirement because it requires a planting, a planning strip from the street line to the parking lot line. And the applicant does not anticipate there being a need for a landscape design because the plan is to leave the strip of grass that separates the street from the parking lot as is. However, to the extent that the planning board wishes the applicant provide a landscaping design for this grassy strip, we can certainly supplement this site plan with such a small requirement. And that's, those are the list of the waivers requested for those zoning by law considerations that are within Phillipson zoning by law.
Okay. Did Chris have anything to add to that or is he all set?
No, almost said, I think he explained the site plan waivers appropriately.
Okay. Is there anything else? Any other comments that Damon or your, you know, your group would like to make? Or you're all set?
I think, this is Chris started. I don't have any other comments. I'm here to answer any questions that you folks or the public has regarding the project.
Right, right, right. No, we don't know. Just trying to close out the, you know, the pack like, you know, for the, for the presentation, so to speak. Okay. Damon, are you all set?
Yeah, yeah, we're just here to answer questions.
Okay, good, good enough. So for the public to understand what's going on, what we just did, a little presentation of the, the site plan, what they intend to do there, the waivers that they asked for. And I got, and I gotta let you know, because they ask for waivers doesn't mean that they're going to get the waivers. It doesn't mean that they're not going to get them. The reason why I was focused on that to try to, to find out what waivers that they request because they cannot request a waiver after the public hearing closes. And not that we intend to close it tonight, but after it closes, that's it. If they want, if they want to go for waivers, they got to start all over again. So we're going to give everybody the opportunity to comment on those things. If you think of something tonight, tomorrow, or the next day, you can certainly get ahold of the planning board and say, hey, I was thinking it might be good if they did this. Now, it has to still comply. We can't go outside of what our regulations are. So if everybody takes the time to look at the commercial site plan, review regulations, all the information about this site is on the planning board website. So you can pull up all the information that Damon and the engineers have sent to the town, the surveys, the storm management, whatever. There's quite a package there, but you can certainly go online, pull it up and look at it. So I guess I did, go ahead.
Excuse me, Bernie, this is Nick O'Valensky. I have a question for you. With respect to the waivers and the request for waivers and our discussion of them, the zoning bylaws suggest that an applicant for a site plan review may request a waiver for one or more requirements of this particular section, the section D that I was teaching to. And it's really, the purpose of the site review is to establish criteria for the layout, scale, appearance, safety, and environmental impact. But you mentioned a question about the name. And I recognize that the name of the entity ultimately, if it's changing, can pose certain concerns. But is that something that you would like a waiver requested for at this point in time? Because I don't see a place where I would cite a specific section of the zoning bylaws to request a waiver to change a name at a later date. But I certainly would be remiss if I didn't request such a thing at this point for my client, given that he is changing the name of his company from Tempest Inc. to another name, to Royal Sun.
I guess my suggestion, Nick, would be to, is that the request should be in writing. And you certainly have the opportunity to do that now that you mentioned it. But you certainly have an opportunity to request that in, in writing.
It has been requested in writing when the materials were submitted for this purpose. And this is the time, this is the public hearing, and it's the zoning bylaws speak to the public hearing as the time when any additional information can be added or requested. And the name change was requested with the materials that my client, Mr. Schmidt, submitted to the board. So I just wanted to be absolutely clear, crystal clear, that that is a request. To the extent that you, the planning board, see that as a waiver request, then that is what it is. I don't believe it fits within your zoning by law definition of what a waiver request is. But nevertheless, I just want to be clear that that is.
Listen, because we don't want to spend a lot of time on that particular issue. We want to give, I want to give the public, you know, an opportunity to comment on this. But, but I would ask you to send it in as a waiver just to cover, you know, the package that we have. Everybody's on the same page. It'll take you two minutes to type it up and send it then.
Certainly, I'd be happy to do so.
And it doesn't have to be done tonight. Okay?
Okay. All right. No problem.
So, okay, so we're going to move on to the, first of all, the other members, Dan, Gordon, John, Vern. I'm hoping, I don't see Vern here, but I think he's on, right? Is he here?
Oh, Vern?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think we lost him. I just want to make sure he's in on this so he understands what's going on.
He was there, he was dominating. And then he said, he seems to have gotten booted out.
I think he fell asleep.
He got booted out? Okay. Stop, stop it, Dan.
Everybody in the gallery is muted, you know, nobody can speak.
Well, that's understandable. So we're going to have any other comments from planning board members? Any questions with, you know, amongst ourselves? Okay, why don't we go on to the, let the public speak? Kevin, you're going to have to like, when the hands go up, kind of use your discretion, who should talk first and?
All right, looking to see.
Do we have any comments or questions from the, from the public? Anybody raise a hand? Not seeing any?
I don't see any. Wait a minute. Here's one here. It was this Jay here, fast, so.
Hello, I was a site plant, and I see your proposed septic is way up above the building there. Is that correct? The septic would be higher than the building?
Yeah, at this time, that's the most logical location for us to put the septic. What it would be is we would utilize a pump system to pump the, we'd have a tank right outside the building that would collect the solids and the liquids would get pumped up the hill. Not new technology, we do it a lot, anywhere that we can't get gravity.
Okay. It just looks, I know that that's way up high on the hill and it's pretty rocky up there, so.
Yeah, we haven't finished doing test bits for the septic system, but we have, I mean, it's a 20 acre site, so we have, we do have a bit of room to be able to find a location outside of the jurisdiction of conservation. So we should be okay, but that's kind of where we're thinking right now.
Next one I saw was Adrian Kristen. If you would unmute, please.
I had a couple of questions. One was the septic we just answered, but the second one is the traffic counting that you noted. Can you tell me how long ago and how that traffic study was done? I live on Baldwin Hill, and I haven't seen any of those traffic counts in quite some time on these great roads. I'm just curious how recent or how old that traffic study is that dated.
That's a good question. So the traffic count was done November of 2019. So it was in October and November 2019 that we paid Ron Mueller and Associates to do the traffic count. And they also are dealing with, you know, the traffic concern that they did.
Okay, so I guess with that said, there's been a lot more, I think, a lot more traffic now with all the businesses, the mobile gas station and things like that going in around the area. So, you know, increased wear and tear on the roads, we get people turning around a lot constantly. And now I'm, I'm wondering about, you know, when that business goes in, people making wrong turns, thinking, you know, maybe where the entrance is, whatever. Is there some sort of agreement that was submitted with the town of Phillipson as to, you know, the cost of wear on those roads and maintenance on the roads like our, the end of our road in particular, to handle that?
Yeah, I mean, we don't, you know, we didn't call out anything on our agreement with the town. And all I can say is about 9,000 cars a day pass that facility, you know, and we're expecting maybe a couple hundred people who are lucky. So, you know, the amount of cars that we're adding to the, you know, I don't see our standpoint that it's, you know, you know, a cost to the town. But we're going to pay the town a couple hundred thousand dollars a year, I would imagine. So.
Yeah, Damon, speak to the community, speak to the community impact fee, that's a component of a whole community agreement.
Oh, yeah. So there is, you know, a 3% retail tax that we pay on, you know, all the purchases in the store. You know, so that goes to the town, you know, they can spend that on fixing the road, you know, whatever they want to do.
Okay. I mean, that's what I was curious about. I thought about the Templeton's agreement with the community impact fee. And I was wondering if Phillipson is set up to say, I just, you know, I mean, coming in and out of my city, and I ride a motorcycle too. So coming in and out of the street and that too. I want to make sure that the roads maintain, you know, in a capital Atlanta so that it's safe for everybody involved.
Yep, that makes sense.
Thank you. That's all I had.
Okay. Was, was there anybody else?
I don't see any other hands. I had, I got texted a few people go drop. Not sure.
John, I'm looking right now and there's nobody who's.
Okay.
Line, you know, to get back in. So.
Okay. So, so one of the things that I want to mention here is we did send out a request for a response from different boards and committees in town. The fire department, the police department, the DPW, const station, the Dublin inspector, the Mass DOT. We've got back a few of them. The only one that so far, and I say so far because we're still waiting for a few, is the fire department has, had asked about access around the back of the building. He said he wants to be able to get fire apparatus around the back in case it's needed.
Yeah, I talked to the fire chief, Bernie.
Yep.
So, yeah, we squared that away once. He was, I think there was some miscommunication there. I, I talked to him last week.
Well, I just wanted to make sure, you know what I mean, like before, so we don't come back like.
I guess he had said, you know, when I asked him, he said he hadn't equipped with the plans yet.
Yeah.
You know, about getting to the back of it. And, you know, he talked about some of his other concerns besides that. But, yeah, no, you know, I sent him, my dog, I sent him the, the plan, or I believe I did, double check. So he could have picked the plan and come back to me with any other suggestions. But a lot of it had to do with, you know, having emergency access for a fire if they needed to get inside, you know, like a lockbox to get in.
Okay. And that was, that was the other part of it. That, that's fine. And so that, because there was a question prior to about the road and people going in Baldwin Hill Road and stuff like that. There's no, there's no driveway or access into and outside of this establishment on Baldwin Hill Road. It's strictly off a state road.
When we have, when we have our systems up and running, yes. I mean, currently there is access also following in.
That, that'll, that'll be somehow, and you'll have to show it or give us a statement or something in the plans that that's not, because what we don't want people to do is go out into the residential area. That was the whole, that was the whole reasoning to have it on two-way and to have it like closer to the road and trying not to disturb or, you know, bother the neighborhood, so to speak.
Yeah, there's already a gate on that, on that entrance.
Okay.
So, yeah, we definitely won't be using that for the public.
I just mentioned it so the abutists, in case they're here listening, they understand that it's not, that issue about, we can't stop people from going to turn around if they missed their turn, but they're not going to be going up there and going in and out of the property. Okay?
Yeah, I think our entrance, I don't know off the top of my head, but I think it's almost about 500 feet away along the road.
Yep.
So you got to be somewhat really confused going there.
Okay. So the other thing is, we had asked, and we put something in the newsletter about responses, and I think most of the questions should be, be answered by the presentation this evening. And actually, most of the concerns were about not allowing marijuana establishments in Phillipson at all. That's not really the objective of what we're trying to do. You know, what this, this is a commercial site plan, it's not like if we're going to do, allow marijuana in Phillipson or not, that day's already come and gone. The people have voted that, you know, that they'll allow it in Phillipson. So.
Excuse me, Bernie?
Yes.
You've got two hands up, one from Linda Ellis and one from Rick Tenney.
We have two hands up?
Yep.
Okay, who was first?
Linda was, so I'm going to unmute first. And then we'll do Rick next.
Yep.
Thank you. My question is just that, the school bus route, would that have any factor about comments and goings with the school buses and where the kids wait? I don't know that area well, so just wondering if you fit that into account. Thank you. Great presentation.
I mean, from our standpoint, I mean, we don't sell anyone under 21, so.
This is about the, the bus route itself? Like, is it with the entrance or, I don't know where the bus goes in that area?
Yes. So the Cannabis Control Commission has a, you know, rule about 500 feet from a school. So they don't consider, you know, a bus route being a school.
I was just wondering where the bus, like, picks up and drops those kids, if it would interfere with your business.
Oh, no, no. There's no bus, there's no bus stop in state road in front of the, in front of the driveway.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Rick, if you'd unmute yourself, please.
Did we find him?
Yep, Rick Tenney, if you'd unmute yourself, please.
I'm trying. Okay, is that good?
There you go. Perfect.
Okay. Hey, Bernie and everybody. Yeah, Bernie, I'm not sure if you, if you got my email that I sent back to you in response to that question of the departments. I think the only concern that was going to be on my end would be the driveway permit. And I think that is out of my jurisdiction, being a state road. And I'm going to think that, Damon, you guys have already gone through that with the permitting process through the state.
We are trying, but Chris, you know, Chris probably could speak to this better, but it's my belief that I'm waiting for you guys. I'm waiting for the planning board to give my site plan approval and then we can apply to the Mass DOT.
No, so we can't, we can't apply. There are two separate tracks. We haven't yet because we were just trying to get this hearing. We didn't want to jump the gun. But we are now in the process of applying for that access permit with the state. I don't expect there to be any issues. We do have the full traffic study that we get, that we are going to submit prior to the project. So it's a fairly standard process. I don't expect there to be any delays with that. But obviously, we would have that in place prior to any construction accessing state road.
Okay. Yeah, no, I think that was the only concern from the highways point of view. view.
Okay, and I did get that message, and I did, I did send something out to Mass DOT, the contact person there for this district, and I'm looking for his comments on, on this to look at the plan and get back to us. We would like to see that before we voted on a decision for this, obviously, because that's a pretty important piece of the puzzle. But that being said, we're waiting for that. We're also, because this thing started to take a little bit of speed since the, I should say, the relief of the pandemic emergency orders. I guess there's two different viewpoints, one from the legislative branch and one from the governor, and any of that. We're moving forward with it based on the time constraints. And recently, I think the last meeting, we voted to have McCarty Engineering do a review, the peer review. I sent the contract off to them. They're working on it. We don't have that yet, obviously, so we can't make any decisions or vote until we hear back from the peer review to see what they come up with that pretty large package that Damon has submitted. So that, that being said, is there any other discussion on this from any of the planning board members or from the public? I think what we're gonna do is we're gonna vote to continue it if, if we don't have any, any other comments or, or questions. And can I get a motion, maybe? I, I think we should probably wait till the twenty-fifth because only given a week for the guy to do, for McCarty to do the peer reviews a little bit quick. The fifteenth, I believe, is President's Day. The following week would be the twenty-fifth. Does that sound right?
Wait a second.
Was there a motion to continue the hearing until?
I will make a motion to continue this hearing. So, I'm looking at my calendar now.
February twenty-fifth?
The twenty-fifth is a Thursday, just saying.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, tell me the date.
Would be. Yeah, you're right. The third is President's Day. So, did we do another fourth of the twenty-second?
The twenty-second, correct.
So I would make a motion that we continue this hearing until the twenty-second of February.
At seven fifteen.
Second.
Okay, motion's made and seconded to continue the public hearing until February twenty-second at seven fifteen. Any other discussion? See, see, and then, can I have a roll call vote from the board?
Sand and I.
Robertson, aye.
We lost one.
Yeah.
Melo, aye. Okay, so voters. So that's the end. We're not gonna have any more discussion about this, the commercial site plan review is continued in February twenty-second, okay?
Thank you, folks, very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Now, let's move into some of the other stuff here. I had a couple things on the agenda for earlier, but obviously, I got messed up with the, now I gotta find my agenda. Because there's probably some people waiting for this, the comments on the dirt bike and motocross. Why don't we see if we can handle that? Where we at? Did I, did I send the copies of the comments to the, to the other members? I believe I did.
I received them and read them.
Okay. Dan, I'm sure you got them?
Yeah, I got them.
Okay, John?
Yeah.
Okay, so I'm, I'm kinda like, there was somebody who asked to be on the agenda to speak on this. And if I can find his name, I think it's Jay. Jacob?
Pacheco, I think it was.
Pacheco. Is he on here tonight?
Yeah, B. Pacheco is on here. Yeah.
Okay, can we?
I asked him to unmute.
Okay.
Can you hear me okay?
Yep.
Can you hear me okay?
So he's unmuted.
Is, can we hear him, or is there a problem?
Can you, you guys hear me?
Yep, just speak up a little.
Yep. Is that better?
Yes.
Hey, so I just, I just talked it on the agenda. I wasn't sure exactly how this was supposed to work. For those who don't know me, my name is Brian Pacheco, been a resident here for almost fifteen years and live on Blake Corner. I make a statement to ask any questions during the public hearing. I want to be perfectly clear. To leave that, I'm still intrigued. There's no other way. Based on the bylaws, the town's website, it doesn't seem like we ever had an amendment like this approved or even required. I asked myself what changed. A lot of my questions, specifically on dirt, as well as dirt tracks and motocross tracks.
Terrific.
Some of these questions, need context to the amendment. Would the public be willing to add to the entire?
Brian?
Yep.
Brian, we're having some difficulties hearing you. I'm not sure if it's on your end or.
Yeah, are you guys getting feedback because of, because I'm still having a mic on?
Who has a mic on?
Oh, I wasn't sure. Just text.
I only got a few articles.
What do you think? But I'll try to speak a little slower, so you can back to the pad. Can you hear me now?
What was you doing when you asked about somebody having their mic on? Because you, we could hear that.
No, the reason why I said it is because I can hear the back of the feedback. I'm making a statement and I can hear it. It means that somebody else is on. It may actually be you, Bernie. I'm not.
Well, maybe, maybe it's me. Should I mute my thing while he's talking?
I think that may help.
Let's, let's try it. I'll give you.
How's that? Is that a little better?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, thank you, Bernie. So based on the current laws of the town's website, did you like, we ever had an amendment like this approved or even required? I asked myself what changed. Why do we have you out again?
In the background? Started out clear, and then I couldn't hear you.
Okay, let's try this again. Does that sound clearer?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Let me go back. Okay, so I reviewed the town's website, and based on the bylaws that we have today, it doesn't seem like we ever had an amendment like this approved or even required. So I asked myself what changed, and why do we have neighbors focusing their attention specifically on dirt and motocross bikes, as well as the dirt and motocross tracks that they ride on? To answer some of these questions, we need context to the amendment, so the public can truly understand why the entire town should consider such a restrictive, restrictive addition. This I'm hoping to be provided by the petitioning body and through constructive conversation here today. To add some context to the conversation, a driving factor does have something to do with our new neighbor on Blake Corner Road. This new neighbor has purchased his property legally, seems to be developing it legally, from what I understand, all within the current laws in place. He also just so happened to put a dirt track on his property, and they ride dirt bikes on them, but not just for fun. From what I have learned, it's just because that's something they do to earn a living. This, again, was all done legally within the current laws. So, some of my neighbors who signed a petition, you know, who live close to this new neighbor, believe the noise generated and the extent of the noise is in violation of their rights, and they want something done about it. I agree. I agree that the noise could be a nuisance, depending on your location, and to some could be considered intrusive. But based on the current law, I don't believe it is illegal. So now we can start to see some context as to why my neighbors, and curiously, the town, are attempting to prohibit the use of dirt and motocross bikes and their respective tracks with this amendment. I do agree with my, and respect my neighbors who have signed the petition to an extent. However, like dirt bike and motocross bikes and the use of their tracks, chainsaws, lawn mowers, tractors, ATVs, and a bunch of other machines can be just as loud and even more intrusive. But even their use is protected by being allowed to be used during certain times during the day. And interestingly enough, without a town bylaw or an amendment. So I circle back, and I ask myself again, why do we truly need this amendment? Why does it need to be so restrictive? And more importantly, why should anybody like myself support it? I wish I could say that this is due to some sort of town-wide study or survey that shows dirt and motocross bikes and their tracks pose a severe threat to the well-being and safety of the entire town. From what I understand, there were no such efforts by the town or even the petitioners, so I cannot. I wish I could say it's not to punish this one landowner, but what I continue to learn, it is not, so I cannot. Finally, I wish I could say that I support this amendment as written today because it was done in good faith and to serve all. Up till now, based on what I've learned, this amendment allows the isolation and extreme prejudice of one landowner, all while stomping on the rights of most, only to serve a few. Because of this, I do not support this amendment as is written. However, I'm here today to learn more. Maybe you can change my mind. Again, I want to thank you for your time for listening, and I will have some follow-up questions.
That was good. I heard every word.
Beautiful. Thank you.
So can we get Bernie back on?
How'd that work?
Great. I could hear what he said.
There you go, Bernie.
Okay, I had to figure that one out. That was, that was interesting. It was, you know, an interesting comment from, from somebody from Phillips and so. Is there anybody else that wanted to speak on that? And by the way, we did ask for comments and concerns, and it seems like it's pretty, it seemed like more people were agreeing with the former comment just, that was just made. And I gotta tell you, I was looking at it because a lot of people sent me things about like, hey, it's in a commercial zone or, you know, recreation zone. How do you stop those types of activities in those, in those zones? If there was a concern maybe about changing something in the residential zone. But again, we gotta look at that. This is just individuals' comments and where they stand on this. I also sent the other board members a copy of something that Bonnie had sent me about the definition of tracks. I don't know if you received that or.
Yes, I got it.
Or, or not. So, and the more I look at it, the more conflicting some of the language and stuff is. I know we're right in the beginning of this, and I guess with work, everything can be, you know, modified or straightened out or whatever. But how, how does, how does it relate to, Bonnie, are you available to, to comment on this, by the way? Is Bonnie there?
She is. Let me, Bonnie can actually be unmuted. Yeah, she has to unmute, please.
Okay.
There we go.
Okay. So you just heard the individual, he, he had some questions. He was trying to get some clarity on this. When I looked at the definition for the dirt bike, motocross tracks or whatever, it says, it, it, it says repetitious fashion or multiple times by recreational vehicles or highway vehicles. So is this just for?
Off-high.
I missed it.
Vehicles are off-high, right there.
So it isn't a snowmobile and off-highway vehicle?
It's a what?
A snowmobile?
Possibly. I suppose so. Yes.
So is this gonna include snowmobiles? Based on the language of the track, I would say it is.
I suppose so. The, the whole point of it is to limit the amount of noise that goes on for six hours at a time. Okay, so in order to do that, I submitted this amendment as well as the central bylaw. And for this amendment, I'm asking for people to limit the, limit the use of dirt bikes, motocross, the motocross race track.
Okay, so it's gonna need some more work on that definition then, is my understanding? If somebody had a four-wheeler and they wanted to go out and they keep going around their yard in a circle or something, I'm assuming that's a path or a track, and that's not gonna be allowable?
Perhaps other people can, can be requested to answer some of these things. Yes?
I just, I wanted the public to like to weigh in so that they, so that everybody understands the repercussions of, of doing something like this. And I'm not crazy about a lot of noise either. In fact, anybody knows that they're putting up like ten buildings down at the end of Petersham Road. And I'm, I'm enjoying the, the trucking that's going by and the engine braking that they use coming down from the center of town going around the corner like every fifteen, twenty minutes, which is probably equal to like somebody blasting a ledge all day long. But so I, I don't know, where do we stop with this? Like, where do we go? It's gonna be up to the public to decide. But, but it looks like it's more than just dirt bikes right now.
I just wanted to mention that the language by recreational vehicles or off-highway vehicles comes from the, the, what is it, the, the off-highway, off-highway vehicle safety laws that are dedicated, that are mainly written for dirt bikes by the Massachusetts, I don't know, Massachusetts Department of Motor Vehicles.
Is there a way we can get a copy of that so we can understand it a little bit?
That apparently is online through the state government, mass.gov. It's off-highway vehicle safety.
It's off-highway safety laws?
Off-highway vehicle.
Yep.
Safety laws.
Okay, I'm gonna look at it, just try to understand like what the reasoning is, you know, behind that. So, again, I'm not quite sure how to move forward with this. I'd ask the other members to, to weigh in and give us like their opinion.
I see Linda Langivan has had her hand up for a while here.
I wanna let Linda talk.
Okay. Linda?
Turn?
Your turn.
Can you hear me all right?
We can.
All right, very good. I just want to address a couple of the points that the other gentleman brought up. I just want to address a couple of the points that the other gentleman brought up. And he mentioned the noise that chainsaws make, lawn mowers, et cetera, you know, leaf blowers, that sort of thing. Understand that those mechanical devices aren't run six and eight hours a day, day after day after day after day. So maybe they're run a couple hours at a time, and it's certainly tolerable. But I want people to understand that if they were living next door to such a track, the amount of noise that goes on. And this is, this is for people that use that track all day long. And I've experienced this, this last summer right on my street, my next-door neighbor. And it is, the noise is eight hours a day, day after day after day. And it's not just one vehicle, it's at least two. Now perhaps they don't have the proper muffler on there. I don't know how to even get them to use the proper muffler on these devices. But I think the rights of, of a person to have some peace and quiet, and not even peace, but I mean a reasonable level of, of noise that's going on. I think our right to have some quiet is equal to the right of the people that are driving these vehicles. And I wish the public would consider that if the track was their next-door neighbor. That's the way people need to look at it. It's, it's, they probably don't care about it if they're the ones who are running the machine or if the track is several miles away from their home. But when your home is right next to it, it really is so unpleasant and it just doesn't seem right for those of us that are suffering from it. And that's what I'd like to mention. I don't think that the person that currently has the track that this issue is being addressed, I do not think they are being singled out. I do not think they are being discriminated against. It's their activity and their noise level that is the issue. It's not the individual person. And by the way, the track that I'm talking about on my street is in a residential zone. So Bernie, if you have any ideas on how the current zoning bylaw addresses a track in a residential zone, I'd love to hear about it. But I don't think that exists.
Sorry.
I, okay.
Sorry, I hit that too soon. Sorry.
Okay, I just have one other comment that really is legitimate. On the current zoning bylaws, it lists the different zones, residential, recreational, commercial, that sort of thing. And then in the very bottom, it says, "All activities not mentioned above are," I don't recall, it's either not permitted or requires a special permit. Now, if a motocross track is not listed in our zoning bylaws, and it is not, and all of the activity that is not mentioned in the zoning bylaw is prohibited, then why are these tracks being permitted to begin with? And I'd like the planning board to address that specific legal issue. Thank you.
Okay, Bernie, I'm, you're back to you, Bernie.
What happened there? I was like cut out of that while the conversation was happening?
We can only seem to, if we keep more than one person open at a time on this, on the microphones, that's where we're getting all the feedback from.
Okay, well, anyway, I like to keep the comments a little bit shorter so we're not like rambling on and not letting other people have the opportunity. Number one, the concerns that, what happened right there is, my understanding is, is, is an activity happened in a commercial zone. So the activity is not in the residential zone. If somebody's in a residential zone and they have a problem and they're saying something's not, it's in violation of zoning, they should be talking to the building inspector. They shouldn't be talking to the planning department. That really isn't for us to enforce. Number two, the, the activity that's happening on Blake Corner Road, it's, it's happening. It's well documented now by the complaints and all the things in the planning board here, meetings where we're discussing and stuff. Something that happens prior to a change in zoning is grandfathered in. So the individual, even if we change the zoning, doesn't mean you're going there next month or next year and saying like, hey, you can't do this anymore. He's can go to court and say, no, I'm, I'm grandfathered in, and I believe he's within his rights to do that. I'm not condoning the activity. I just can tell you how it works. The other thing, Blake Corner Road is in a commercial zone or that parcel of land is. Somebody could go in there with a logging operation and have big chippers and have logs coming in and chipping and grinding all day long. There's nothing prohibiting them from, from doing that. So, so don't, don't be wishing for something that you're gonna get something worse at the end, I guess is what I'm saying. We should try to work it out and live in harmony without creating a situation that's tense for everybody. The planning board, I'm sure the other members, we're willing to try to work with people, but we don't want, we're not like revenge going in there and trying to tell somebody, no, you can't do this. We don't like what you do or whatever. That's not our policy, but. Anyway, I'm gonna have somebody else come in here. There was, I believe the ConCon's on here. They wanna speak?
Hey, it's Kim Pratt. I'm speaking up to myself. I just have the ConCon computer, so that's what I come up with. I did write a letter also, and as Linda said, that everybody has the right to do what they want on their property, and I have no problem with people using their ATVs or snowmobiles. And this is, it's excessive noise and people should be allowed to enjoy their property as they want. So about the bylaw, how would you talk about regulations? Would there be a way to regulate noise more? So that, I know we should work this out, you know, but I don't know that neighbors can do that. I don't know that people can agree like that. So is there a way to work on even regulations through planning board for something like this?
If any of the other board members want to step in and speak on this, Dan or John or Gordon, feel free to step in. This is, I mean, obviously this thing can get, it can get like, it can get out of control like heated because people have passions one way or the other, and I, and I understand that. I don't mind myself as, as a planning board, if, if it's decided that we need to pursue or do something like this, then we might have like an outside consultant come in and give us some advice on it, like how to, how to accomplish what we're trying to do without creating some, you know, some bad feelings amongst the people in Phillipston. Because ultimately, that's what ends up happening. And that's not good. I mean, either way, to me, I, I don't really have an opinion one way or the other, but I am gonna try to protect everybody's rights to do whatever the right that they have now to do. I don't think we should, I don't think we should be taking people's rights away from, whether it's being in a navy noisy neighborhood or, or telling you you can't ride the bike. Those are, it's a difficult decision, so. Anyway, can I let Brian talk again? Because he was, had his hand up for a while here? Is he still there? Can you hear me?
I can.
Hey, so I just want to tell everyone that, obviously in my statement, right, but, but when we say we're not isolating one particular member in the community, I want to find out what research was done and collected to even bring this to the, the board for discussion. Because if it's based on the petitioners who live nearby and they, they draw up some local support through their friends, then you have to start looking at the vicinity of where the noise is coming from. And lo and behold, it is in fact in and around Lake Corner Road and Athol Road, right? So, so again, it's hard not to look at it that way. But to the petitioners and the people who feel that they have a right to peace and quiet, that's why I moved to this town. But I also moved to this town because I bought a big enough piece of land that I could do a lot more on it than I would if I lived in the city still. And just like other, other members of our community, they, they purchase big plots of land so they can do what they can do. And again, it's, we don't want to violate anybody's rights, but by completely taking away someone's rights to satisfy another's, well, that's not the way either. What, what should happen is, if it really has to come down to that, is that maybe it comes to a town vote if people really want to push this issue to the max. But at the end result is if you start restricting people to use their personal, you know, equipment on their personal land, it's gonna cause problems in the community as a whole. And I go back to, you know, the statement of the survey and the research that was done. And Bernie, if, if that is something that the town is willing to spend money on, to find out how many tracks do we have deployed through the entire town of Phillipston? What was the noise collected, the noise volumes collected? And how intrusive is it is and where are all the complaints coming from? I mean, then it makes sense because if there's a serious problem in the town of Phillipston where we have dirt bikes and motocross tracks going up everywhere, then this is all a suitable conversation. But as far as I know, there's only one member in our community right now that has what people are calling a dirt track or motocross track, and that is the man on Blake Corner Road. And if there are other people that ride their dirt bikes in their property, right? Again, identify who they are and let's collect some data. So we can, so as townspeople, we can actually make a legitimate decision on whether or not this is good for, for all of the people. Thanks.
Okay, I had to figure that one out, how to unmute again. And I muted myself so we could hear him because it was back, background or whatever. I'm gonna show who this is. Jeff C. He had his hand up for a while too. Can we let him in, Kevin?
Was I, have I been unmuted? Okay. So I guess, I'm on Blake Corner, and yes, I am in favor of the bylaw proposed. I can see that some of the verbiage needs to be changed. Bernie, wouldn't, would you mind muting yourself because that feedback is coming from you? All right, so I'll concede that some of the verbiage needs to be modified a little bit, and I know that that's what Bonnie was working on. And yes, at least from, as far as I understand, that this was brought on because of, what's his name up on Blake Corner? So it's not a matter so much of, are we trying to single one person out? It's we're also trying to help out the rest of the community to prevent this from happening in their backyard. I do have concerns that it's commercial and that all of a sudden in a year or two, you know, despite what may be said verbally, that all of a sudden tons of traffic might be increased. But also, this is quite literally my backyard. There is no peace and quiet. If I had 50 acres and I had a dirt bike, I'd be all for riding it. And I encourage everybody in town to take advantage of that. But there's a big difference between somebody riding around or their kid riding around in their yard or so on, than a 25 or 30-acre professionally designed, professionally built motocross track where multiple people riding non OEM exhaust, you know, bikes or whatnot with non OEM exhaust on there. I mean, these are racing bikes. It's a 25 or 30-acre track up there, and maybe I'm mistaken on this, but as far as I understand it, permits were not pulled other than for water and electric, in which case no grandfathering would guarantee that because it wasn't put in legally. But again, that's, I, I could be mistaken. That's just, I was told that only electrical and water permits were run, or were pulled rather. But it's not about, like I said earlier, it's not about trying to stop people from riding around. And that's where Bonnie's working on the definition of a path versus a track versus, you know, enclosed circuit or so on, and the verbiage is very difficult to get in there. Because if you have something, ride it on your property, enjoy it. The big concern is helping people in this town keeping, you know, to keep more of those from all of a sudden appearing. Because, I mean, especially nowadays, working from home, I can't have my windows open if I'm working. I can't, you know, there's one room in my house, and I'm sure you got my letter. There's one room in my house where if I sit next to the closet, I can have a phone call while I'm working, and yes, they have ridden during the day. Can't have my windows open, can't enjoy the back, you know, the outside. There's a huge difference between somebody putzing around or, or, you know, a single four-reeler or a chainsaw. That is not what these are. These are racing exhaust. There is a huge difference. It's basically a straight pipe, and it's a lot of them, and it's constant. There is one day it was 12 or 14 hours, both Saturday and Sunday. It's not a matter of people riding around their yards. I encourage that. I wish I had the land to do it, and I wish I had an ATV to do it with. This is about what's up there. Again, that's like, I don't know, 25-acre track up there. That, that's not somebody riding around on a little path in their yard. I could probably ramble on for an hour and I won't, but that, I think, kind of sits a lot of my points. But I am curious about permits, because like I said, as was explained to me, an electric permit was pulled and, and a permit for a well was pulled, but not a permit for a track. So I'd certainly be more curious in what permits were legitimately pulled. So I'll hand it back to you, but thank you for the time.
Bernie, can, you're all set? You're unmuted? Okay.
Yeah, I'm all set. Can we try to, you know, I don't, I don't want to cut any people short, but I want them like rambling on and on and on about the, you know, the same thing. We, I understand his point of view that he's, he's next door to him and he hears the noise more than, than most people do, so, but. And there's two different points of view. Obviously, we're here on both sides, so. How about Peter and Kristen? I see they had their hand up for a while. Can we let them speak?
Hi Bernie, thanks. I guess my, my problem is, one, then like everybody else is saying, it's not, Linda's saying she's not targeting the person, she's targeting the activity. By targeting the activity, you most certainly are targeting the person. A professionally built dirt bike, as the last speaker said, dirt bike track, is it open to the public? I mean, we're worried about, he said things like traffic and other riders coming in. There's no signs or anything that it's a professionally built dirt track open to racers of all ages and et cetera, et cetera. It's a guy using his private property for an enjoyable event that he, you know, that he does. Now, I agree, if the noise is that excessive, what about the noise ordinances in the town? Do we have them in place so that noises can't occur before certain hours and after hours to limit the noises that are in there instead of saying, let's just ban dirt bikes and dirt tracks? Because my other concern is, one of the only taxpaying businesses in the town of Phillipston is Cycle Design, which sells and repairs these very same vehicles that they're complaining about right now. So when you start banning dirt bikes and dirt bike town, tracks from the town, you're also kind of targeting a business that, that has customers coming and going on dirt bikes. So would they not be allowed to drive through our town to get to that business so that business can remain in effect in that location? That, that's my concern too. So I think the, the, the way this is going about is, is completely just trying to target an individual, which I feel bad for. And I think it should be more to curtail the noise, which would fall under the noise ordinances in the town. Thanks.
Yeah, can we, can we let um Brian speak? I think he's uh and and then Linda, then we're gonna try to cut this off. So we can move on to some other business.
So I I just want to make a, I just want to ask a question. Uh, it sounds like there was a lot of information that was collected, uh, specific information, like the size of the track. How how big it is, it actually being determined that it's a professional track. How is that information collected and was it done legally? That's my question.
Linda, I think you were up next.
Um, I'm, I'm just curious, has anybody talked to this guy and asked them? Maybe they could um drive a lot less or maybe, I don't know. I know trees help cut down on noise. I don't know if there's trees available there or. I I don't know the land or anything, just a thought that maybe it's a neighbor, maybe we could ask the neighbor. You know, that I don't know if it's been done, no clue, just a thought. Thank you.
Okay, I don't, I'm not sure. Did did this person speak before? This uh, was it Gabe? Does anybody know if we gave them the opportunity?
Hello?
Go ahead.
How you doing? Um, yeah, I own the property on Blake Corner Road. I'm I'm the one.
You're the one, okay.
I'm the, I'm the, the most hated person right now, I guess. But um, yeah, um, I would love to talk to my neighbors. They're just um, it's my private track, you guys don't. I know uh, my name's Gabe, by the way, Jeff, but uh, you don't gotta worry about me turning into a public place. With a bunch of like Crow Hill up the road. It's my, it's my private track and I'd love to talk to my neighbors about how many bikes I can allow on there, what time of day you guys want me to ride. What days you guys don't want me to ride, just, no one comes and talks to me. Everybody goes on my property when I'm not there, takes photos on Facebooks. Flies drones and stuff, you know. Somebody was at the end of my driveway one day freaking stopping people, calling me pretty much the Antichrist. So yeah, I'd really love to talk to somebody, like talk to my neighbors, see what you guys have to say, what time, how many bikes. I'd I'd love to talk to you guys. That's it.
Okay, um, uh, your name was Gabe, right? Is he gone?
Yeah, my name, my name's Gabe. Gabe Beter is my, my father owns the property.
Can you, Gabe, could you send your contact information, maybe like um email it to the uh Philbin Plan and Board?
Yeah, definitely.
And may maybe we can try to um, you you know, after all this is said and done tonight, maybe we can. Get together and and try to create a situation that's a little uh better right now. So people aren't like after each other, we work together. And, you know, and and that being said, I'll 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 let you go, but send that and then we'll have some further discussion. And we'll probably um, well, obviously we'll have some discussion with the other people in the community that. You know, are concerned about the noise and the activities and stuff. And that, I I think from a planning board side of it, we we want to bring everybody together and and make it a nice, happy, safe community for for everybody. I can understand the noise issue and I'm personally thinking like. A noise bylaw is a better um, is a better situation than a zoning bylaw on this particular uh issue. But if we can work something out within the neighborhood to keep everybody happy, that's the best situation that anybody can ask for. So uh, that that being said, send us your contact information and we'll see if we can put something together to make everybody happy, okay?
Definitely, yeah. I'd love to talk to anybody. I know I moved in there, you guys were there first. I respect peace and quiet. Yeah, I would definitely love to talk to anybody that would like to talk to me.
And and thanks for stepping up to the plate and um and coming on tonight. Because if people don't do this stuff and get together and make themselves known and that. You you know, you're a person too, everybody has their their beliefs and rights and stuff like that. Uh, want to make a work for everybody, okay?
Yeah, definitely. Thank you, thanks.
Thank you. Okay, we we really should move on to some other stuff because we've got some other business we've got to take care of. We're gonna probably follow up with this uh next meeting also. And um, and I think that's probably. Well, I'm gonna look at that stuff that Bonnie sent me about the off-highway vehicle stuff. Uh, but again, I think the best solution, if we can just get everybody together and work on the same page, it makes sense. Okay, let's move on to some other stuff. We have an A and R plan that we're supposed to endorse this evening for um Mattson Homes. Those lots on the end of Petersham Road, they they want to um redo the lot lines. To make it more effective or I think they probably ran into some wetland issues. And they're trying to make sure that they stay as far away as they can. I'm not certain on that. But anyway, the, has everybody seen the, the uh A and R plan that came in? Can we unmute the other guys? Kevin? Kevin? Hello?
I'm talking to you, but I'm unmuted myself. So, yes, Dan is done, let's see.
John?
Unmute himself.
And I think, I think I heard Gordon, right?
Yes.
I copied.
Okay, so so did everybody get a copy of the of the plan? The A and R plan for Mattson Homes?
I believe I did. I don't have it. I I, you remember when that was?
I don't, I need to go on the computer to dig it up. Okay.
The plan is dated January seventh, twenty twenty-one, Alf Berry Land Surveyor.
Yes.
I mean, all the frontages in the area are fine. I just don't know if we're changing all five lots and that's five hundred dollars, a hundred per lot or we waive in the fees or?
No, no, they're changing the, because they're they're changing the lot lines. It's a, it's a considered a new lot. So we got five lots. They did submit a check for five hundred dollars. I have that here.
And I would move, we endorse the plan. It it looks fine. I did the math, I counted the frontage. I see nothing wrong with it. As far as frontage and area goes.
And and I did the same thing. I I looked at it and and I made them put the stamp on it that um. You know, a little disclaimer about. Oh, you don't want to just put it on the my law.
What was the date of that?
One seven. You should have got, I I emailed a copy. If Gordon got it, then you got it. Okay, so we have a motion. Do we have a second after everybody looks at it? Okay, motions made and seconded. Any other discussion on that? Okay, see you in that. All in favor to say aye by roll call vote. Telepsych? Okay, I've got telepsych, I, Robertson, I. Mallow and I, so voted. And what I'll do is I'll, what we did before, I'll bring the my law down to the town hall. I'll sign it, bring it down there and then when you have an opportunity, uh, the members can go down and sign it, okay? I think we'll pass on, I I checked the mail today, there was nothing new, but um. There was, there was a notice for a public hearing tonight at six thirty in Hubbardston. Obviously, we're not going to that. We can do the minutes next meeting. I think Kevin said, help me with this, Kevin. We have an office coming up?
Yes, um, I've had Andrew in there with me. We nearly cleared all the extra files and um papers out. So you should be able to get in there by this weekend.
Okay, then there was a second question, I think Kevin sent me, if we mind sharing a secretary with other departments?
We had spoken about sharing with the Conservation Commission and the Building Department. We will put the money together and that way we could have enough for like a person somewhere around twelve hours or a week or so. Who would also be available to take your minutes um and for conservation to share their. Do their minutes as well and also work in the Building Department. So they'd be there a couple of days a week in the office and then the rest of the time would be available to be at the meetings, you know, and take minutes in the evening and so on.
Yeah, what what's the board members um, uh, opinion on that? What what do you think? You okay with that?
Sounds good to me.
Yeah, a little help will go a long way.
A little help, a lot of help will go a long way. Okay, I I guess, Dan, you okay with that?
Well, I know that uh, there's a lot of paperwork involved in the planning board. I'm not sure how sharing a secretary would work out. If that's, I'm talking about the secretary or the or the office itself.
Just the secretary.
Yeah, the secretary. I think, I don't know, Gordon's the guy that can speak to that question, I think. Seems to me.
I think it would average out, you know, it'll be like twelve to fifteen hours a week.
I think that's perfect. Someone's got to be available in regular business hours.
I'm sorry, we're getting that speed again.
Yeah, but that's not all for us, Gordon. So we we probably have, um, I'm I'm thinking like a couple, three hours a week.
Oh, easily, yeah.
Okay. I I think anything's gonna be a big help at this point because there's a lot of stuff that that um. A- as you know, once we get into these things with these public hearings and zoning amendments and stuff, there's a lot of light work and. And um, and people don't see that go into this stuff. And and Gordon, I know you appreciate it because you you've been doing most of it, so. But it's very time consuming and we certainly could use the help. I guess the recommendation from the planning board would be to, let's let's move forward and at least get somebody even if we have to share.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Yeah, please.
Okay. The, we we looking to do um budgets for next year, Kevin?
Yes.
When is that information, when's the slips and stuff gonna be out?
Um, we'll be sending out the forms in the next week, you know, like in the next seven days. Because the temporary accountant has just finished the reports for November and December. So we'll be able to show you what was spent for the full prior year, what was spent for the last six months. And then you can make your request for the full next fiscal year.
When when do they need to be returned, the budget request?
The Finance Committee wants to have their copies later than the twenty-fifth. So we would like to get them in the Selectment's Office sometime, February, twenty fifth of February. So we would like to get them in the Selectment's Office, you know, early in February so we can put them all into the spreadsheet and that. When is your next meeting supposed to be? Your normal meeting?
Well, we we're gonna go to the uh, to February twenty-second, but.
Challenge to continue the uh, hearing.
Yeah, but what do, you, we're not gonna meet Presidents' Day. You wanna meet next week? Do you want to meet February first?
I mean, for this, maybe. If we have time, though. I mean, would that help us? Get any of this ready?
Well, what, again, when when's the request form's gonna be ready?
We should do it the twenty.
I'm gonna put them together this week. Now that she has the reports done, I just got them over the weekend from her. So, and I just posted them on the website, so I'll be putting the dollar figures into them, you know, in the next few days. So if you're meeting on the first, you'll have, you know, the figures for the past year and a half of what you spent.
Okay, we we can have a quick meeting on on the first. Let's get the stuff done. And then. What else we gotta do, John? The minutes?
I don't know, do you have minutes, Gordon?
No, what else? You said we got like the February first, you said some other stuff?
No, no, I'm just playing now. It's just as well that we uh, would do it on the first and some budget stuff. So we wouldn't have to be picking up time on the twenty second.
Exactly, let's hit it on the first.
Okay, let's do it on the first. The, on the agenda, it says discuss increasing the commercial site plan application fee to five hundred dollars. Right now, it's at two hundred? Between, between the mail-ins and the advertising and we're already like over three hundred bucks just for this one. That we um, that we started tonight. I I would move that we at least, and if we're gonna have a secretary to help us out, there's gonna be more costs incurred by the town. But my recommendation would be to, I'm thinking to raise it to five hundred bucks, but I'm I'm listening to.
I think that's a good, I'd make the motion, five hundred dollars.
I'll second that.
Okay, motions made and seconded. Uh, let's see, Sandin. Okay, all, any other discussion? See you in that, all in favor to say aye, roll call, please.
Telepsych, aye.
Sandon, aye.
Robertson, aye.
Mallow and I, so voted. Okay, I'm gonna do the same thing about um, discuss the uh increase in A and R lot fees. Currently, they're a hundred dollars. We haven't changed those in many, many years to, it's, I'm I'm thinking, again. This is conservative, but I think it works for for us, for the town and for applicants to a hundred fifty a lot.
I would make that motion to to uh change the fee for A and R lots to a hundred fifty.
It sounds reasonable.
Is that a second, Gordon?
Oh, I'll second that for sure, yeah.
Okay, so let's have a roll call voting on that.
Telepsych, aye.
Sands and aye.
Roberts and aye.
Robertson, aye, Mallow and I, so voted. And I think, does anybody have anything else that they want to add tonight? We can pick up the rest February first. See you nothing, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion we adjourn.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded and adjourned. Any discussion? See you in that, roll call vote, please.
Telepsych, aye.
Sandon, aye.
Robertson, aye.
Robertson, aye, Mallow and aye. Okay, so voted. But Gordon, can you give me a um, a call sometime? So um, I want to get together with you to do the file, the um. So, um, I want to get together with you to do the file, the, um, some, some check fees, this check that I got for the A and R lot and stuff. You know where the accounts, where the stuff goes? And we have a $5,000 check for the consultant for, um, uh, for this peer review.
Yeah, I could scratch it up, uh. Did you say when?
Just call, call me or text me whenever you, if you want me to, to, to meet you or if you just want to do it on your own, I'll give you all the stuff so that you can. Uh, so we can get to stuff like in to the town, so it's, uh, the funds are collected.
Yeah.
Okay?
Definitely call you, yeah.
When, when you get a chance, okay?
Yes.
Okay, that's it, we'll see everybody on the first.
Take care.
Okay, good night.
Good night.